We're here in the city of Espanola for tonight's city council meeting. Thank you guys for coming here. I haven't been to one of these in a while. So, uh... So let's see how it goes. This is our first meeting of the first month. You're live, buddy. You're live. They got five million. Do you know what the five million was for? By any chance? That's the young boy right there. Let's see if he called the cops. That's the mayor. Let's see if he called the cops. See if he called the cops. Government vehicle, government vehicle, government vehicle. So thank you guys for joining. Let's see, let's see what goes on here. See what kind of bullshit happens. Look, there's my two favorite guys. Look, that's Danny Cordova and then there's Elijah Marius. And right there, big talker, big talker. I'll bark and he'll bite. You guys good, man? They're all in the principal's office, sir. John Tier. No, not yet. Sorry, guys. Didn't even read the block. I'm gonna get it done.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the regular, first regular meeting of the month of April of the Espanola City Council. Enmirosa Torres, the time is 6:06. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every chain of justice for all.
Vocation this evening will be that by Councillor Salazar Torres.
Thank you. Jesus, we come before you today, uh, just thank you, first of all, Lord, for all your many blessings, for giving us another breath of life. And, uh, thank you for those that have entered your presence today because it's not a curse that somebody doesn't have the breath of life because they're in your presence. Uh, Lord, we pray, uh, for those that are sick in our community. Uh, we pray for those, Lord, that are in need. Uh, we pray for our, our youth and, and our kids here in the valley as they start another sports season, Lord. Uh, that you, uh, build a hedge of protection around them, Lord, and just keep them safe. Uh, we pray, Lord, that you, that, that you would, uh, that you would just guide us, Lord, as we make, uh, decisions, uh, for this city, Lord, and, uh, as always, Lord, it's, uh, mess of us and more of you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councillor Salazar Torres. That's beautiful. Good evening, everyone. Would the clerk please hold the seat, please?
Mayor Protem P. D. Martinez, moderate of view here. Councillor Justin Salazar Torres.
Present.
Councillor Aaron Salazar. Councillor Denise Benavides.
Present.
Councillor Pedro Botes.
Here.
Councillor Felicia Archiveta Toya.
Present.
Councillor Samuel Laddoo.
Present.
Councillor Nanette Rodriguez.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Esperanza. Um, approval of the agenda, I'd like to recommend the following amendments to tonight's agenda. I'd like to move item A for items proposed for consideration to become C, and then we just move up the rest of those items.
Ooh.
Second. Which is made by the Mayor Protem, thank you, Mr. Martinez, second by Councillor Salazar Torres, under discussion, Councillor Laddoo.
Yes, I would like to make another, uh, change. Could we move the, the last, the item A under matters of the mayor to above, uh, councillor comments?
Um, item nine is moved to under councillor comments. Any other? And there was a second by councillor Rodriguez. All in favor? Oh, forgive me, we have to divide the question because there's already a motion to approve the agenda and there's an additional amendment.
Amendment, uh, taken by the original motion maker and the second approves?
Yes.
I'm gonna go to that lady.
Okay, all right. So then being, uh, being that way, we consolidated both, uh, items. All in favor, motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, forgive me, we have people online on Zoom. Uh, you have to do roll call, Esperanza.
Councillor Denise Benavides.
In favor.
Councillor Aaron Salazar.
In favor.
Councillor Felicia Archiveta Toya.
In favor.
Councillor Samuel Laddoo.
In favor.
Councillor Nanette Rodriguez for the motion. Councillor Pedro Botes.
Yes.
Councillor Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Mayor Protem P. D. Martinez. In favor. Motion carries.
All right, the agenda for this evening is adopted. Uh, for the consent agenda, folks who have before you the city council adoption, meeting, the adoption of the city council meeting minutes, March 11th, 2025. Motion to approve councillor Salazar Torres, second by councillor Rodriguez. All in favor, motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh. Roll call again. See, I was getting used to us having everyone here in the chambers the last two months.
Councillor Samuel Laddoo.
In favor.
Councillor Nanette Rodriguez. Councillor Pedro Botes.
Yes.
Councillor Denise Benavides.
In favor.
Mayor Protem P. D. Martinez.
In favor.
Councillor Justin Salazar Torres.
In favor.
Councillor Aaron Salazar.
In favor.
Councillor Felicia Archiveta Toya.
In favor.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, councillor comments. Councillor Samuel Laddoo.
Yes, uh, I'm sure, like many of you, uh, what's been on my mind the last couple of weeks has mostly been, uh, Baby B Hill and the tragedy that happened. And I just want to thank, uh, the state police for the incredibly quick response and, uh, you know, and hopefully that swift justice has served in this situation. And I hope that, um, San Fe and Washington pay attention to this case.
Recording in progress.
And try to make sure that nothing like this ever happens again. Thank you.
Councillor Salazar Torres.
Uh, thank you. Just want to remind our, uh, our valley and those that drive through it, uh, again, sports season's here, so those that are driving around with their RV and, um, their memorial park here of Aldeza, Ranchitos, or whatever maybe pedestrians say, very slow. Got kiddos and parents and, uh, everybody crossing streets and whatnot. Uh, so please, uh, be careful with them. And also want to congratulate our neighbors in Okeo Wege on their sports complex. Uh, it's beautiful and amazing and, uh, we thank them for opening it up and sharing it, which, uh, it was a football little league and they had all kinds of sorts of grants for it.
Councillor Benavides.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention a new grant program that's out there, uh, agents for landlords, and it's to rehab their property. It's a forgivable loan. Uh, you do get it back in the form of a fee for utilizing that grant program. It's also to encourage landlords to utilize vouchers for individualists that are on lower incomes. So I just wanted to mention that, Mayor. It's out there and, um, you know, come here for those landlords that need to rehab their cars.
Speaking of that, councillor, I know they were having a webinar on April 2nd. Have you heard of that webinar?
There is, Mayor, but I don't know the date, but I can certainly find information. Actually, I forward it to, uh, somebody to put on the website, please. It can be fun.
I've been contacting municipal league about it and saw the program. It's a really nice program. I sent it to a few landlords in Alamo River from town, but, uh, if there's another webinar, another informational webinar, would you like to advertise that? Okay.
I'll get it now.
Councillor Rodriguez.
I just wanted to remind the public that opening day for little league is scheduled for Saturday, correct, councillor?
Yes, uh, the 12th.
And do you have a time?
I was, I think councillor Toya may be chugging in on that. I don't know the exact time, but.
10:00, 10:00 AM. Thank you. And also I just wanted to commend the staff, uh, for a great ribbon cutting on Sunday for our veterans memorial park. Even though it was cold, we had a good turnout and, um, that facility is being utilized, um, which is what we like to see. So thank you, staff, for putting together a great, good thing.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, uh, the councillors that were able to attend, the ribbon cutting, councillor Laddoo and councillor Rodriguez Martinez. Thank you guys for taking off your day and councillor Botes. Uh, I want to also thank the staff for preparing, uh, for all of these events on Saturdays, specifically Diana and, uh, Mrs. Esperanza for doing what you guys do so well. I think that, that really is your forte, Esperanza. I appreciate you when you do, uh, planning for events. I think you do well with us. Thank you. Also want to recognize Mike Adams, uh, for the verification that has taken place and the streets department that has been so awesome in getting these done. Uh, anybody that passes through or near any of the parks, whether it's Botes or Vietnam Memorial Park, will recognize that there's been a lot of improvements done at that park, both, uh, landscape-wise and, uh, and structure-wise with the place structures and the street structures that have been, uh, put in and, and all the gravel that has been dumped there and spread out by the streets department. You guys are incredible. I really appreciate the work that you've been doing. Uh, also want to recognize, uh, Mike Adams for, for finding the funding for all of these trees and all of this purification that's happening around us. It's so needed and so impressive, uh, what he's been able to do with connecting us to grants that have been available. Uh, I can say with honesty that I have seen him do more grants in the time that he's been there than I've seen in the whole time that I've worked for this team as well. So I think that's very important to recognize. Uh, also New Mexico Clean and Beautiful and K-Inda are some of the grants that help save for this stuff. I think it's important that the city of Espanola also, uh, do what they can to send a thank you card to these entities from this governing body. Make sure that they understand that these things that they're aiming for our community are very appreciated and very needed and very, uh, very used. I, I also like to, uh, request, uh, the trees that are in the planters along the state, I mean, not going to get watered a lot, especially now in the beginning. See if we can bring them out of urgency and, and get those to, uh, start growing again and make that area of the community, uh, really nice. I'm gonna, I'm gonna request, uh, formally through, uh, community committee, uh, councillor Rodriguez Martinez, that a plaque with the Vietnam Memorial, uh, Vietnam Memorial Park, uh, specifically get done with the Vietnam deaths from this community get put in that park so that we recognize who, who has served in Vietnam and, and the, the sacrifices that they made to our country and to our community on, on behalf of their service to our country. Uh, I don't know how much that would cost us to do, how many there are, but I think it's important. We have the other park on the other side that was happening. And I think that it's important to recognize these people as individuals because it was a huge sacrifice, especially concerning Vietnam. These people came back. They came back to the United States at the time where they were not very welcome. People did not really appreciate the war that they were in. So I think it's very important that we as a community recognize their service. And if I am being honest and truthful, my president is one of those. Um, I also want to recognize, um, Michelle. I want to recognize the fire department. I want to recognize the police department. I really feel like if they had not done their due diligence, uh, moving people out of the Pathway House parking lot, fire that occurred there could have been horrendous. And I think we avoided, uh, some people losing their lives had, had those tents all been there, it could have been critical. So I just really appreciate the work that you all are doing. I ask you just to continue to work together and I really appreciate what you've done. Thank you, Michelle. Don't forget, fire department, police department, hurry, thank you. All have said.
Okay, we're gonna go back to councillor Laddoo.
I just also wanted to thank the, uh, streets department. Uh, last week I saw them working the tails up all over District Four in Ranchitos and Eliano. And, uh, I really appreciate the job that you were doing cleaning those areas up. Um, particularly giving Eliano some of the signs that had been down for some time finally got addressed. There was a lot of problems with Eliano where it'd been drenched. My just sincere gratitude to those guys that are out there and, and they were working very, very hard. So thank you to streets on, on that. Um, I also wanted to, uh, highlight that, uh, this coming, uh, Thursday, there's going to be a ribbon cutting at Kid He Said for their anniversary. Oh, tomorrow, sorry, on Wednesday. Um, and, uh, I know that we're all invited to that at 4:30, so just wanted to promote you that.
Mayor Protem P. D. Martinez.
Thank you. I just, uh, got a text from Concepcion, the media advocate stating, uh, four hundred, uh, Vietnam veterans from the state of New Mexico are here in Vietnam War. So that, that's a huge sacrifice in March 8th in my area. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All right, moving on, um, matters from the mayor. I just wanted to take this time to thank Diana and Esperanza for all their hard work for ribbon cutting. Like councillor Rodriguez mentioned, we may have froze our butts off, but we thanks the fire department. Uh, they cleaned up the firehouse and we were in the fire station this week. Uh, they cleaned up the firehouse and we were in the fire station this weekend. So it was really nice, uh, great turnout. We really appreciate Los Alamos County, uh, for their contribution of the Regional Capital Project Fund, over half a million dollar investment into the park here. Um, I know Elijah's working on that half fort for the basketball and we're looking to see where we can find funding for the Astro Church too over there. So we're not done at Vietnam Veterans Memorial Park. But, uh, just to drive over there just now, I mean, there's so many people. It's incredible. I don't think I've ever seen that many people at that park. I also wanna take the time that, uh, we redpanped with the Garcia family, uh, the Penny Garcia Red Ball Athletic Center is named after. Miss Angie Garcia worked with us to create a plaque that we're gonna be doing for a formal dedication ceremony. This should have been done back in nineteen ninety-eight and we're gonna finally get it done now. Where we're gonna formally dedicate, uh, Ranchitos Pool in honor of Miss Penny Garcia Red Ball. We'll have her mother and her two children on, on, with us to join us that day. So we're so excited about that. I really wanna appreciate the staff for working on that plaque and, um, we'll have now actually, so you can hear the story of who Penny Garcia Red Ball was and so that can be an impact for our future generations of our community. Um, at this time, we wanna recognize the future of our valley and we're so proud of what they did this past season. They've been good representatives of our valley out, uh, off and on the court. And we're so grateful for the challenges, the dedication that you put out each year in the season when you go in for practice and long hours that you dedicate. But most importantly, when you go out on that court, you're representing this community and you've been excellent stewards of that and being good role models for our valley out in the state. Um, so when I move on, at this time, we're gonna recognize the twenty twenty-four Espinola Valley Sun Devils Boys Basketball Team, who I see them all here in this audience tonight. Official proclamation of the city of Espanola, New Mexico, U.S.A. Whereas the city of Espanola and its community believes the student athletes are important and takes great pride in the accomplishments of its own people. And whereas under the leadership, someone else. Whereas under the leadership of head coach Joey Trujillo, the twenty twenty-two, four, twenty twenty-five Espinola Valley Boys Basketball Team finished an incredible season with a twenty-four and seven winning record and a seven and one district record, displaying true passion for the game. And whereas the Sun Devils rose to the state tournament bracket into the semifinal team, exemplifying sportsmanship, leadership, resilience and teamwork. And whereas the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Espinola Valley High School Boys Basketball Team, consisting of Miguel Orozco, and please stand as I say your name. Okay, yeah, if you don't mind, uh, guys, uh, when I call your name, if you can come up and start lining up around here at the dials. Miguel Orozco. Cody Coffeen. Jared, Jared Xuna. Dominic Canassar. Carlos Ponzos. Nancy Lovato. Sois Mokating. Emilio Sabanierko. Josiah Preskey. Michael Vallescas. Henry Cunado. Isaiah Cobinger. Jake Carter. Julian Tindana. Have all demonstrated exceptional talents, skill and determination, successfully winning the district title in the class for District Two. And whereas the city of Espanola congratulates Joey Trujillo, head coach and assistant coaches, Stefan Trujillo, Joe Rindman. Bobby Martinez. Bishop Ray Gomber, where the third victory to three champions, leading by enjoyed Espinola Valley, inspiring young people to pursue their dreams. And whereas the accomplishments of the players on this team have not only excelled on the court, but have also served as a positive role model for your peers. In addition, are admired and respected by the community by demonstrating their character, the death meets at Espinola Valley High School success. And whereas the city of Espanola would like to recognize the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Espinola Valley High School Boys Basketball Team for representing Espanola in such a positive way and congratulating them on their successful season. I want you to record you all in the audience for a sitcom. Now therefore, being resolved, I, Dr. Ramon B. Hill, Mayor of the city of Espanola, together with this governing body, do hereby proclaim the Espinola Valley High School Boys Basketball Team, the Sun Devils, as an inspiration to our youth and source of pride for our community. The city of Espanola wishes to convey this very special recognition by way of this proclamation to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Espinola Valley High School Boys Basketball Team and its coaches to honor this accomplishment and declare the day of April ninth, twenty twenty-five as Espinola Valley High School Boys Basketball Sun Devil Team Day in the city of Espanola. Your team come up and your coaches as well and anyone that's coming speaking. My coach. Yeah, you're welcome to speak. I know it's rich or weird.
Uh, Mayor B. Hill and, uh, city council members. Uh, Mayor and, uh, city council, I'd just like to thank you guys for recognizing these young men for all their hard work and the sacrifices that they do, uh, to make it to practice in the mornings and at night in the travel league. And I think you guys are correct, they did an excellent job of representing the valley, uh, representing their family, you know, the school and everyone. Uh, they were a remarkable group of boys that were very resilient and never backed down from anybody. Thank you.
So guys, uh, the city council has pins for each of you and I think Coach, I'll give you this proclamation.
Do you wanna come stand in the background?
Yeah. But I wanna let Coach into the front stand.
Bringing up to squish in though, guys. Maybe even do like a second row. Okay, ready everyone? Everybody, watch where it is right there. Squishing, squishing a little bit. As when I take the picture, I'm gonna move it, so don't move. Okay, guys? One, two, three. Perfect.
What a wonderful opportunity to recognize our student leaders. Um, I really appreciate the perks off this week and recognizing a lot of our student leaders. We have some more programs to recognize. I think we have McCready, who's been doing pretty good too. So we need to recognize McCready as well. So, uh, yeah, we've been keeping busy with these proclamations each meeting. But great to recognize the Boys Basketball Team. We all know how basketball's positively impacted our community. All right, business with visitors, Dr. Ketchum from Presbyterian Hospital.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I think I was asked to come to just kinda tell you what, what we got to do, what we're doing at the hospital right now. Um, would you like me to take a seat here?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, great. Oh, okay, gotcha. Um, so. Not too loud, am I?
No, no.
Uh, so I just wanna let you know about, um, what we're working on in our, uh, substance use disorder treatment program, the, uh, clinic and our inpatient consult service. Um, the, we've been pursuing grant funding. We've, uh, obtained some, some grant funding from three different sources. We're working on additional funding. But as you may know, we, uh, started an addiction service at the hospital about six and a half years ago. And we've been growing, adding more provider time to the service, uh, in our clinic as well as what we do on the inpatient side. Me, addiction specialist like myself, uh, sees a patient in the hospital, usually admitted for another reason. Uh, but then we discuss their substance use disorders, whether that's opioid use disorder, alcohol use disorder, benzodiazepine dependence, stimul use disorder, cocaine, methamphetamine, tobacco. Um, and, um, uh, help people get through with thrall and initiate long-term treatment, uh, medication treatment anyway. So, um, what we'll be doing, um, over the next year is expanding, adding a lot more providers. So we're gonna be dramatically increasing the size of the service. So currently, uh, if you know this, but our clinic is always double booked, triple booked. Takes about six weeks to get in this new appointment and new patients. Takes us about six weeks to bring somebody back for a second appointment. Um, so I wish we could, you know, just see everybody and that's our goal. Our goal is to have a walk-in clinic time, time for next day appointments, same day appointments, and also adding, uh, more components to that. You know, currently, um, we have providers, uh, myself, we have another physician who works, um, one day a week. And that's seeing inpatient consults in the morning, clinic in the afternoon. I do the same thing on Monday, Wednesdays is their Thursday. Um, I've just added a full day of clinic on Fridays and it's immediately filled up, you know, more than a month out. Um, but we're hiring additional physicians. We've already signed one. She will be joining us towards the end of June. Um, that's Dr. Jessica Gregg. She's a native New Mexican, but, uh, been working in Oregon the last twelve years. She's moving home and, uh, she's gonna be phenomenal. Uh, we've, we've hired a, pretty, we're close to hiring. I'm not sure if we've signed the contract yet. Uh, another doc who's, uh, finishing, um, his addiction medicine fellowship at the University of California in San Francisco, also native New Mexican. He's from, uh, Carlsbad. Um, did his undergrad at UNM, went to medical school in New York, came back to UNM for family medicine residency and now he's at, uh, University of California in San Francisco. Very solid training program. Uh, Dr. Gregg has been practicing in addiction medicine for over, you know, fifteen years or more. Um, so, uh, we're interviewing more docs. Um, our goal is to, uh, be able, like I said, to see a whole lot more patients. Uh, we'll have, you know, nurses dedicated to our service or I've got to have a nurse case manager dedicated to our service. Uh, we're hiring additional peer support workers. We're already adding another. We've had one for a long time. He's done a phenomenal job. If you know Ryan Flores, it's done great work. Uh, but we've just cast in with so much. So in the grand scheme of things, we're adding three another, more FTEs, uh, peer support workers. Uh, we'll have a program coordinator. Uh, there's a lot of grant funding, you know, to coordinate and, uh, manage all the paperwork for, but also the role of our program coordinators, really to be out there interfacing with the community and all the other programs that are going on. And we're always trying to partner everywhere we can with the Central Clinic, with PMAS, with, uh, the two, uh, OTPs, Methodist Pediatrics, uh, New Mexico Children's Services, you know, health services and Forest Mountain Center and, uh, Rack, Rack Stop. The social services, yeah, absolutely. So, um, the, uh, and, and our real goal is to, to really assist, um, Pathways Home and Shelter. We've been, uh, working on ways to, to make that feasible. Um, I think we're meeting with our health client today. They, they might actually have a, a vehicle, so, anyway. Um, so that's what we're working on and, and if you, I'm sure you know the history, um, of where we've been, you know, nationally, you know, unfortunately, you know, where we've been per capita in overdose mortality and such over the years. Uh, we've been slowly, you know, dropping down. That's where we wanna be. And, um, you know, my goal is that three, three years from now, I hope that, uh, Rio Grande County is no longer even in the top one hundred. That's my goal, so.
Dr. Ketchum, can you let them know how to contact you or what's the process in order to seek treatment?
Yeah, so we are, um, this will change a little bit in the future. Actually, let you know what we're doing with the physical space. That's a big part of this, right? Because right now, our, um, addiction medicine, our substance use sor- service line has always, you know, we've had kind of a small office in the hospital from which we work out of seeing patients in the hospital. Uh, and by the way, you know, in the past, sorry, a couple of different concepts here going on. We're doing a lot. We're in a lot, trying to tackle it in so many ways. We have, um, and I used to work at Santa Fe Medical Center and Espinola. So I used to go back and forth. And when I was at Santa Fe, I would, you know, do consults by telemedicine up here. Then when I was here, I'd do telemedicine consults down at Santa Fe. About ten and a half years ago, I was able to move all my work up here because I just like working up here more. Um, but, um, we're also adding, you know, providers so that we will, from Espinola Hospital, uh, this will be really the, the center of addiction medicine for many of the Presbyterian hospitals for the state. So we will provide that telemedicine service again for Santa Fe, for Clovis, for Riedoso, for Secora, we're all coming out of Espinola. Um, we, um, and then as far as the clinic goes, uh, the only way we're gonna be able to see so many new patients and have three providers working at once with, you know, nurses and MAs and peer support workers and all, is we are moving into the old emergency department space. So as you may know, the old emergency department's been closed for about ten years. And we moved into there for about two years during COVID because of course, you know, the government wanted us spread out as much as possible away from each other. And, uh, that's also, we did a lot of the COVID treatment and testing, you know, was in the emergency room space. Then when COVID was over, it no longer qualifies as that level of care. What I mean by that is, um, uh, it's expensive to renovate hospitals, to continue to function as hospitals, um, such as an emergency department, which is considered critical care space, uh, ICU, OR space, all that stuff is really expensive to renovate. Um, however, we're gonna be turning this into clinic. So the clinic has less restrict requirements on it, but we will gradually, um, we're, we're working on the funding to do so. The plan is to eventually remodel the old emergency department and turn it into clinic space. We are, um, therefore it'll actually have its own access, own entrance, own waiting area. Um, we are working on, we've gotten some funding to hire a psychiatrist. We're working on adding an actual parallel behavioral health, uh, program, um, to help us treat co-occurring conditions, but also, um, they don't have to have a substance use disorder to be seen by the psychiatrist service, right? So we're looking to, um, we, I don't have, um, any news about actually hiring a psychiatrist yet, but we have the funding for, um, at least posted the position. It's really, it's a parallel service. It's not gonna be reported to me. So I'm focused, uh, in my lane. I'll hire an addiction doctors. So I think that's mostly the updates.
How do they contact you though?
Oh, yeah, so currently, um, currently our space is like I share, I work out of a couple of rooms in endocrinology, right? And, um, so we're part of the multi-specialty clinic. So, uh, if you've been down at the hospital, you know, the second and third floor are all our multiple spec- multi-specialty clinics where we do primary care, family medicine, internal medicine, pediatrics, um, OB-GYN, um, and our, our surgery specialists, our general surgeons, podiatrists, orthopedic surgeons, urologists. Uh, they're all part of the best, all these specialty clinics. So the main number now for the multi-specialty clinic is, um, five oh five, three six seven, zero three four zero. And just ask for the renewal clinic. So our substance use disorder clinic, that's the renewal clinic. Um, but when we move into the, um, the new space, I don't know if we'll have a new separate number. I imagine you can still call the main number, they'll route you over. We, I know we've hired, um, a registration clerk already and, um, a lot of positions to fill. It's, you know, it's not just the, um, the doctors, right? You know, we're gonna have some APCs, so, um, uh, we may call mid-level providers as a nurse. So we've made called mid-level providers, it's a nurse practitioner, PA. Also be helping us on the service in addition to nurses, medical assistants, peer support workers, program coordinator, case manager. So it's a lot of focus. So it's a really a radical, dramatic expansion of the program. So and our goal is to, in addition to just working locally, to see more people here in Española and work with the homeless shelter and try to see more adolescents and just folks who want to be seen. But you know, you may not know this, but folks come from a long way to our clinic. A lot of people come from Santa Fe, from Los Alamos, from Taos. People come from Albuquerque and come up to our clinic. And so we're going to try to work with, do our best to partner with the smaller rural clinics, rural primary care clinics in Ruidan County, like the last clinic custom marketing system, to be able to help serve their patients better, maybe allow that by telemedicine. So lots of, lots of goals. Do our best to get there. Hopefully enough of our funding gets pulled. So that's a scoop. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. We're glad to be finally being in person instead of a group chat. It's been a while, Michelle's invited us to be in person. But thank you so much for being there tonight and for making a round with your partnerships. I'm excited about your programs. I want to introduce you. Right behind you is Elijah and Suzanne from Jared's place. They're speaking, programming, putting together that, that you want to keep. Well, it's, yeah.
We have a meeting tomorrow morning.
Yay, thank you so much. We're great to meet you. And we'll be heading over.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Ketchum, I just want to say thank you to you and Española Hospital for your dedication to the initiative that you're currently undertaking. It's a big, big deal for this community because we are suffering from the issues that you're trying to solve hard. I want you to know that I would like to see you come back to Jameson. I want to see benchmarks being made. And I just am very excited about the work that you're posting.
Well, thank you. And we have to, you know, we volume data recording to renew our grants. So we're working hard to get there because we want to make sure we can renew this funding year after year. And. Sure. Welcome.
Dr. Ketchum, I, I know the struggles of worrying about grants since I've worked for one. But I want to thank you so much for everything that you're doing, being on the front line of this opioid crisis. I went to Presbyterian Hospital the other day with some of our students from high school to get a tour of exactly what's going on, seeing a lot of the, and seeing a lot of the facilities firsthand. It's a completely different situation. I really honor and respect what you guys are in the effort you're putting into it because it's desperately, desperately needed in our valley. So thank you for everything that you're doing to try to put a dent in this massive problem. And if there's anything we can do to help these last.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Those are ridiculous.
I would also like to thank you for your presentation, but I do have a question. How does someone qualify for services?
So we take all forms of insurance. We will, we're working on our communication process with the Department of Health. The Department of Health also is a small clinic in town. They have some funding to help people who can't qualify for Medicaid recover their medications. And we just started meeting with them last month. So we have to kind of figure out a process, especially as we have some more personnel. I've honestly just been hanging on by my fingernails for the last few years, just trying to keep my head above water. But as we, especially as we add some more support personnel, we'll figure out how we get patients over there once we identify those who need, you know, more financial assistance. And I wish I could speak to more financial assistance programs or if there's not that knowledge or about it. But, you know, we of course take any type of insurance at the, at the hospital. And of course, and as a hospital, when I say about insurance, I mean in your clinic, right? You know, as a hospital, we're obligated to treat everybody, whether insured or not, and we certainly do that.
And I think as we continue to work together, we can find more funding and do everything on that end. It's a work in progress.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Ketchum, for joining us this evening.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a great evening.
All right, we'll be now on the grammer, on the grammer.
I was here. What's that?
Well, last time I was here, I was asking what you guys were doing to help me with the Vista facility over there that tore down my hill next to my property and dumped all the dirt into my yard. And it's been flooding my property. My brothers and our, our family, the road is totally damaged. And, and you guys went, a couple of you guys went over there to look at it with me and stuff. And then they said they were going to talk to the cooks about it and stuff. And they were going to hook us up with a, some kind of a meeting so we could work it out. And I haven't heard nothing from you guys. What's going on? Are you guys actually trying to help me?
So Mr. Bustos, we can't respond to you right now, but what we can do during the city manager report, we can ask Mr. Much what transact you need to report.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bustos.
I just would like to see something actually happen.
Is he coming back in? Because I like to surprise them when I read this. It's just called respect.
Let's record reflect the council session at the Toyota joined us at 6:30. Well, and who needs your time or not?
Well, I mean, it's kind of a mutual respect. They have the city manager when some of what I have to say is directed towards him. I will proceed forward and I will also read it again. Can you start that now? Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying to Peggy, thank you for trying to get things completed with the animal laws at the last meeting. Also for giving those people credit who helped you with those. I'm sorry you hit a roadblock. Onto the roadblocks. John, I'd like to remind you who you work for. I'd also like to remind you that the citizens of this town are who voted you in. You know, last, you have no right screaming like a two-year-old at the last meeting when Peggy was asking you for something, screaming that the city doesn't have seven lawyers and animal laws are at the bottom of the list. Well, if you and Eric would behave and not cause so many lawsuits against the city, the lawyer might be able to focus on the things that he needs to, such as laws and ordinances. Eric, the fact that you peeked out and looked at Peggy and gave her the cutoff sign was utterly disrespectful. And I wish Peggy would have spoken up for herself at that moment. The people here in Española are who you work for and who you answer to as a city council. Know that we have voted you in and some of us can make sure that you do not get voted in a second time. We expect mutual respect as you are always talking about decorum. What you had at the last city council meeting out here was completely not decorum when I've been asking for years for animal laws to be updated. And all Peggy was doing, was doing what she's been trying to do. Thank you.
Stephen.
I know Eric's out here because he's a coward and so he runs in heights. Anyways, you want to talk about movidas, Peggy, on your little comment that you made last time, the two movidas. Eric called Mizal to go have a constituent removed from a concert from the city. That's a movida. That's a dirty thing. That's a beast of power. That's dirty politician. That was pretty shady on your part, Yorone. On Eric's part, that was pretty shitty that you guys did that. That's pretty messed up. With that being said, you guys are all fucking up bad. And it's just the beginning of the year. It's just the beginning of the year. You guys got voted. You guys are spending money left and right. It's a miracle your body came complete. I wonder what grade you guys got in. Peggy, you're also tied in with movidas between 2018 and 2020 when your Black Suburban was used in some scandals. It was because it was on Channel 4 with Gotti Schwartz. You can deny it all you want. It was there, but he flipped and pointed the finger at someone else, like he done plenty of times. It's there, black and white. You can shake your hand all you want, but it's the truth. Eric is a coward. You guys should have fired him when he did that bullshit. You should have done something to John. You guys should have silenced him, something, something should have happened. You should have, Mizal, you should have pressed charges on, on, on Eric for filing a false police report or abuse of the 911, even though he didn't. He called you instead of calling 911. He did ipr requests. There's no 911 call. Stated on the, on the locale video. That's some bullshit. You guys are running a journey scheme here and that's kind of fucked up. So fuck Eric, that coward that's back there. Fuck you, Peggy, and fuck you, John, you fucking pieces of shit.
Thank you. Moving on to city managers.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, go ahead, officers. So just a couple of recommendations this evening.
Eric, can you pull it closer?
A couple of recommendations this evening. I want to start this game from Chris Archuleta, the GAF. And this goes out to Garrett's place for helping to clean up the memorial wall down here on the west side. I want to recognize Mr. Luhani or stuff. And just, I'm going to give first and last thing initials of David P., Webber T., Justin D., KCR. Is it Nestor C.? Is that the title? And Mr. Matthew, Matthew G., Monty M., Estelon A., Dylan S., Mark B., Ryan H., and Andy R. And thank you guys so much. And I did, I did meeting last Friday with the veterans. I called it up from the state office and from the state VA and locally. And so we were working on some results. I got to get my name with Paddy Krishna, Ron Vaebo, so they're already learned better to the valley. Chris Archuleta, Eloy Rego, and Matt Torres. So we can facilitate, start working on the solutions that we need for, for, for the, not just for that area, but for the entire city as we, with our social charity all the way around and how to improve situations that, that, that seem to plague the community when it comes to your PD and the disrespect for the, for the wall down, down on the side of town. So we, that, that's already started, Mayor. And I want to thank those gentlemen in Spain for working with the city to provide for solutions. And tonight, I went, I started back on Employee of the Month and we selected someone who's pretty, this gentleman has been working so hard there diligently and so what's that person? With this, with, well, high land use has been rebuilt, the whole department. I separated the two divisions, planning is one department, zoning is a different department. And we hired as everyone's council hosts, Eloy Rego, to handle zoning. And Ernesto Martinez continuing on the planning side. The gentleman recognizes this evening, he's held his own. He's done a great job and it exemplifies his dedication to this community, to the city. And just a couple of examples of writings that, that came to me from the public. There's no completion or whether I'm just going to take a little insert from there or read all of it, the entire book. But she wants to commend Mr. Torres for guaranteeing his, her, her contentment, hearing her, hearing what she had to say and dealing with the situation, protecting the community. It's a priority, he says, the safety and the security of all of her neighborhood. She's from High Regona. And Mr. Torres has been committed and devoted to enforcing the Clean and Clean Program. He has gone beyond his duties and has always, and has always appeared to me on the clean, clean of progress of the 1900 clean and the 1815 High Regona properties. That was from Felicia Romano. And this coming, a little insert from Paddy Krishna, Gero Montenius. Your dedication adjusting the matter, wanting further, preventing further deterioration of a situation that alleviated the safety concerns of our neighborhood is committed to upholding the city's regulations. It's commendable and greatly appreciated. So Mayor Council, I want to thank Mr. Torres and give him a certificate of appreciation of the employee of the month of the city.
Mr. Luhani, does that include your report?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Can you, can you address Mr. Bustos' concern and just give us an update where we're at with that situation?
Absolutely, Mayor. Mayor, go ahead, counsel. Elijah Mahdis and I went out to Mr. Bustos' house personally again. We walked the property. We got asked not to trust us on a certain area, which was what they had other people's property. But we needed to see where the wire was coming through. And on several attempts from myself or from my office to get a hold of this Kelly Cook, we're unsuccessful. We're still attempting to, so we can leave this. I don't know what the situation is, but we are continuing to work on it. What we did, try to address it. It is not a city issue here. It is private property. It's their subdivision that sits on a hill and right over Mr. Bustos' property. And I believe you can see the attempts to make, to know what between them all. You know, on their property, but through his. And there, there's been issues there, I said, not wanting certain things that, that, that impact his property. So, like, do you understand the situation we have in mind? They probably just will be.
So the code which describes the, describes, it talks about layout and development of subdivisions in our community. It also talks about drainage control. Is that a situation that we could hang a hat on regarding this, Mr.?
I'll defer to the, the first director.
I don't know if he's, I know, but I don't know if he's, it's in the code regarding the development of subdivision because the situation is, is arising from the Vista de la Rio subdivision that was created by the young land development company. So, this is probably more planning and zoning situation with enforcement from our courts aspect because of the drainage.
Council, so others. Uh, thank you, just so I can get some information, is the drainage coming from the subdivision? Or is it also coming from the BLM land that's behind there as well? Mayor, Mayor Proketa, Councilor Torres?
Yes.
That's not the way it works. They, they didn't follow the, the drainage plan from the young one. They wouldn't have been as bad as they did. They just went ahead and did what they wanted. And I didn't want subterranean, not furtherers, and also, and all the farmers of Ramo.
Is there a way we can formally summons, not the court, but a formal summons to the young land developer company to get ahold of them, at least to come together for a meeting to discuss this?
Mayor, Mayor Proketa and Councilor Torres, that's what I'm trying to do, Mayor.
Can you keep us updated for the next meeting on Mr. Bustos' situation? He is taking upon himself to come to the last two city council meetings with this issue, so. Oh, no, sorry, three, sorry, I lost track, but obviously the effort's there. And so, we need to ensure to Mr. Bustos that we're making those steps or at least trying to minimize, or at least an update to Mr. Bustos would be great.
Absolutely.
On that note, does anyone else have anything for the manager council to do?
I'd like to thank the city manager for following up on that situation. I took a tour of Mr. Bustos' home as well. And, uh, yeah, I, I am, I took some pictures and I think I sent them to you, Eric, a while back. And I, I just would like to be updated with whatever happens and just to just know what's going on. So, if you can, I appreciate that. Um, I also have just one more of a question. I know at the beginning of, uh, well, not the beginning of this year, but sometime last year, this discussed about updating a lot of HR policies. One of them being updating some of the, uh, the code in our HR policy manual to meet federal regulations when it comes to veterans. Has there been any, um, progress on that? Is there anything we can do to help?
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Proketa and Councilor to do. What we have done recently is in-house without having the mayor's board to review this process and working, created this task force recently to address a lot of those issues with veterans. But as far as the HR policies concerned, uh, Mayor, Mayor Proketa and Councilor, do know we are not.
Okay, and if there's any way we could try to just make sure that all those, just, just so that we make sure that the veterans that work for us are, are, um, is covered as much as possible for our human resources. I appreciate that. If there's anything we can do.
Mr. Lujan, can you give us an update where we're at with, we're going to step into the paving of Coronado?
Mayor, Mayor Proketa and Councilor, that one I can, first to the, of course, the. Art, and that one will be discussed.
Mayor, Mayor Proketa and Councilors, Mr. Lujan. Right now, it's, it's been a little bit of putback on there because of the weather, I know it's warming up this week, but that kind of up and down on the weather, because I did have some other companies that were wanting to come in, but nobody was foreseeing the snow and the cold that we did get. So, we'll get back on and check with them where they're at because I probably put it behind some other projects they're doing. So, we're all scheduled in there. I know we're trying to get into April now, that he said. They told us mid-March to April, the beginning, so we're still on track. It's just a matter exactly which week, but we'll check back with them.
So, my only thing is, is obviously I wanted to get that, but I want us to create a good traffic control plan where we notify the residents of Cor, North Coronado after that entire duration. That road sees a lot of traffic. And because of the construction, I mean, it's going to be a great big burden on the neighborhood. And so, I just want to ensure we make this as soon as possible for the drainage of all and such. So, I just want us to have a good plan going forward and how we communicate that with the community.
We'll make sure we communicate with them well because we have the schools, the hospital, fire department, residents. We have a lot of people that utilize that a little bit of the road. So, we'll make sure that everybody's one way or another can communicate too.
Councilor, uh, Councilor, can you give us?
Can you provide us with the company industrial park growth and funding on that? And when we can see that that will get completed?
That's coming through the state there, so I, I believe we're.
We're there.
No, I think we're.
Mayor Proketa and Councilor, we have, that money has been appropriated for, it's industrial. So, it's a time period when the money is released on the capital allowance. Actually, that money came directly from the governor. So, that's my understanding. And then the other F billion dollars came directly from the discretionary fund of the O T.
And so, what's usually the N C H to have those funds used?
July one.
July one or as soon as the government, that it's out of emergency, so it's not. Only industrial was classified as emergency.
It was classified, but the M T V uses.
Signs off on capital allowance, that money can become, um.
She hasn't signed the capital.
She hasn't. She asked for Friday, right?
Friday and twelve, but.
They haven't had a special session. And that's high. And then, uh, myself and, uh, the public works director, I did meet with the secretary to discuss the T P F. And I was elaborating on at the R T D meeting that we joined council while there's a council, Toya, this last Friday. And so, we are, but it's not, there, it's a separate, Mayor, Mayor Proketa and Councilors, a separate funding mechanism that the D O T has that's separate from the, uh, the local road fund and general funding or, or, um, capital allowance for road projects. It's called the T P F and, and, um, as we learned, uh, R T D got $300,000 out of the T P F last year. They're utilizing it, so we're going to try and match out that as well for, for our community. But it's in high demand and as we know, getting money out of local road fund is not easy. We applied before, but, um, they, they didn't allocate very much money to N F D O T's budget. And in fact, a lot of it, my understanding is to be, the executive directors of N F D O T, a lot of them is cut. So, um, when you're looking at that, Mayor, we, we've got to find our sources. Get a road where we are, on track with what we have in the past and current funding. Get Coronado, La Jolla, um, trying to, trying to work with, uh, San Juan or Okwinga to get, uh, the clearance for Miamontes and, and, uh, the other projects that, of course, Mayor, so.
Not to be an old horse, but can you give us an update on Miamontes and La Jolla?
It's, as a city manager, it's still working with, Okwinga is our biggest hurdle on that. Uh, once we get that cleared out, we have a few months to get those finalized. The plans are pretty much done. It's just a matter of getting those clearances to, to Okwinga. And get those to La Jolla. Uh, we're scheduled on that one too for, for paving, so as soon as we can get them.
We need that care. It's not the whole.
It's not totally, it's 1,200 feet, 45 feet wide. So.
Which he's planning to hopefully, that's what he's talking about with additional funds to paint the rest of it. Councilor, recorders.
Thank you, just to pull, I got silky. Point of work. I have no question. I thought silky, uh, silky blue was the way, right? I thought it was fully funded.
Utilities are not.
Well, they do, okay.
Well, no, infrastructure is thrown and all that. No, the actual utilities is. So, we have $1.3 million for the construction of it without utilities. That's the hindrance. We're almost there. Three quarters of a cookie bake, but about that quarter, you got to cook.
But at least we decided to put it in order and do it correctly and not throw, throw money at that road and then break it back up in a year, put utilities down. It makes us impatient in this situation, even though it's something that is so needed.
I know Mr. Adams is in here, but, um, Mr. Lujan, I know we had talked about looking at even taking that along for an emergency, is that still something we want there?
For the utilities, that's a possible. And as you know, Mayor, Mayor Proketa and Councilors, we have $250,000 from this R T D. But we've got to make.
All righty, um, does anyone else have any question? When I say that comment about you got three quarters of a cookie and we're almost there, it, it makes it really hard. Eric, Elijah, Mike Adams are literally looking everywhere they can to find the money for this project because it's designed for the.
Hey, cream for me? You're yourself? Like the shirt, man? Thanks, appreciate it. So, I came outside because they're going to go into a executive session for a while. And then they're going to do the budget. So.